All right, I will call this meeting to order. We will start with the pledge. Joe, you putting up the flag? Great, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. I will just quickly go through my little spiel that we need to do for the remote meeting. On March 14, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, in an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor LaMans suspended in-person open meeting requirements and permits conducting public meetings remotely by conference call, video conference, or other technology. A copy of the full text of Executive Order Number 7B1 is available for review on the town in Monroe's website at www.mounroct.org. Accordingly, the Monroe Board of Education has selected Zoom as the preferred technology application to conduct remote public meetings in compliance with state law. This technology will permit up to 500 of the public to participate in real time in the public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone via the access information set forth on this meeting agenda. It is highly recommended that any interested participant download and utilize Zoom software applications prior to the commencement of the meeting. Each meeting may have unique participation information, including access code and live room. Please be sure that you're accessing the correct information for the correct meeting. Lastly, any member of the public who desire to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting via electronic mail to the address set forth on this meeting agenda. Notice is hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall permit the public to view, listen, and when permitted by the agenda or and/or the chairman participate in real time in the meeting. Be recorded and posted to the Board of Education's website within seven days. Be made available to the public within a reasonable time. In addition to standard parliamentary procedure as outlined on this agenda, the following special rule shall apply to all participants. Please mute your microphone as to reduce background noise at any time you're not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat features are prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting if in use. Notice is hereby given that only 500 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access is granted solely by Zoom technology on a first access basis and is not within control of the Board of Education. All right. Just a few minutes ago, I did realize that we do not have public participation. That was omitted accidentally from this meeting when I printed the agenda, unfortunately. As this is a special meeting, we are unable to adjust the agenda in any way. So we will not be able to add that to the agenda for this evening. So we are gonna move right into new business and our item A is approval of an MOU vote anticipated. Oh, and before I do that, if I can just for the record, have attendance of the board just for Diane so she can put in in a minute. George, okay? All right. Shannon Minaco? Okay. David?
Here.
Okay. Nick Kapoor?
Present.
There Shannon connecting. Shannon, you are now here.
Yeah, I didn't know what was happening. I, um, ma'am, you, oh, it was like saying the host has another meeting in progress right now.
Oh, okay, no problem. So you are here for Diane. Alan Baglavello?
Here.
Christine Casalia?
Here.
Jerry Stevens?
Here.
And Jeff Folchino is not present. He previously told us he would not be able to be in attendance. So going back to item A, approval of the MOU. Number one, do I have a motion to approve the MOU between the Monroe Board of Education and the Monroe Association of School Administrators as presented? Nick, thank you. Do I have a second? I have so many hands. I'll take Jerry who's unmuted. Do I have discussion on these items?
The only thing, yeah, the only thing I would say, Donna, just like I said a week ago with the, uh, with the teachers, um, when we were having the conversations with the, with the teachers about some form of concessions, uh, we were having parallel conversations with a lot of the other groups, including the administrators who've all along assured us that they were gonna do something. So I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, you know, thank them for, um, for, uh, putting forth this effort and, you know, making sure that, you know, just like our, just like our, uh, our teachers did already, um, you know, making some sacrifices for, for the best of the district and more importantly for, uh, for our students. I really, uh, just like our teachers are an awesome group and, uh, I think the world of them. I think they, I hope they know that, um, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Great, thanks. So did you wanna just, um, touch upon what the, what the, what the MOU is just so the public is aware?
I should probably do that. The, uh, the MOU is, uh, pretty simple. It is basically, um, very similar to, it's almost the exact same one as the, uh, as the teachers, where the administrators have agreed to, uh, to take three furlough days for the 2021 school year. Uh, we're gonna, you know, be able to save, um, some more money and hopefully with that, some more positions, stipends, um, some things that we can, uh, you know, get back to, uh, to our kids.
Great, thank you. And, uh, I will just go around if there's any comments for, for board members before we move on to a vote. Shannon?
I don't have any comments. I, I thank them. So I guess I do have a comment. I think, um, and echo what Joe said, and I, uh, I just thank everybody that, you know, for putting the kids first in these really trying times.
Absolutely. Nick?
Same thing. I think, you know, the staff continues to amaze me in Monroe and, um, no matter what happens, they're putting in what they need to do to make sure that we can stay as whole as possible. So, you know, thank you again.
Thank you. Alan?
Just to echo what everyone else said, thank you, um, for going above and beyond.
David?
Same thing. Thank you. And leadership by example. Good job.
Christine?
Yeah, same. I, um, really, really thank the teachers for going above and beyond with everything and I echo everybody else's comments.
And Jerry?
Kudos to the administrators, kudos to, once again, you know, time and time again, my 34 years here as a teacher, you guys have always come through and you're continuing to. I echo the same that everyone else has said in. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think, uh, I think it says a lot for our staff and who our staff here in addition to, um, the administrators tonight, the, the teachers, um, couple, last week that, you know, that they are stepping up and, um, helping us with these concessions, um, it, it with among, you know, everything that is going on. We do, we are very appreciative of, of that and, you know, I think everybody is here for the right reasons and everybody wants to, um, is in it for the kids and putting the kids first and we do really appreciate that. All right. Anybody else have any other questions before we move on to a vote? All right. Hearing none. Shannon?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so motion passes. Thank you all. We will move on to item B, which is approval of the 2021 budget reductions. Do I have a motion to approve, and Joe's gonna put this on the screen, do I have a motion to approve the 2020, 21, Phase 1, Phase 2, and selected items in Phase 3 budget reductions as, um, presented? And I will have, um, start having with Joe to discuss this. We are not, um, we are not, um, voting on the full reductions tonight because we are still working through a number of, um, discussions with our other unions before we vote on the final one, which is, uh, the rest of the Phase 3 reductions. This is Phase 1 is the Board of Education reduction that was done back in January. Phase 2 is our First Selectman's reduction. And then the couple of items we have on, um, Phase 3 that we're voting on are different things that we know, for our non-instructional, but that we know things like the toner savings, the copier lease, that was renegotiated, the insurance, um, is not, the state partnership plan is not going up as we had originally budgeted because the state went out to bid and got a lower bid for that. So these are non-instructional items. So Joe, do you wanna go through and talk about this?
Sure, Donna. Do you wanna get a, um, a motion in a, in a second?
Oh, sorry. Yes, absolutely. So do I have a motion to approve the 2020, 21, Phase 1, Phase 2, and selected items in Phase 3 budget reductions as presented? Do I have a motion?
Donna, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I can't see everybody on the screen, so if you just unmute yourself and say it.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, do I have a motion by David and a second by Christine? Thank you. Okay, Joe, sorry. Now you can go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, and you, uh, you've hit the, the highlights already, Donna. Thank you. As you remember, uh, we've gone through basically three phases of reductions. The reductions at the, at the Board of Education level, the First Selectman level, and then the Board of Finance level. Um, the first two, um, were about, well, were exactly a million dollars each, $500,000 at each level. You can see those reductions here. We've talked about these quite a bit over the, over the past, well, since January. So the Phase 1 Board of Education reductions are here. The Phase 2 First Selectman, uh, reductions here. And most of the conversation recently has centered around the last approximately $1,038,000 reduction. Um, and what we're doing tonight is we are going to, uh, looking to approve, you know, those first two phases. And then, like you said, these selected non-personnel items in Phase 3, the insurance savings, toner, copier, increase in the athletic surcharge, and we're holding off on, on these ones here until all of our discussions and some of our negotiations are finalized. So we have an end number, which, you know, unfortunately, you know, based on the timeline from this year is pushing us into July 1. But, um, we know it's there. We know there's work to be done. So it's been pretty transparent about, you know, where we're going with things. We are pretty confident already, um, you know, from our discussions last week after the teacher, you know, uh, MOU, that marketing was coming back, culinary was coming back, so the culinary supplies would come back. The music position would come back, and then, uh, two of the reading positions would be reinstated, saving some positions at the elementary school. Um, I think with the administrators and the teachers, we're now looking at about, uh, I think it's about $410,000. It was $378,000 with the teachers and approximately $32,000 with the, uh, with the administrators. So, um, you know, we gotta start looking at some of these other items down here that we'd like to get brought back in. But these are not on the block for tonight and hopefully we can get as much of this stuff back as possible, knowing that we're not getting it all back. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. All right, I will go around with questions. I'll start with Shannon.
No, sorry, cannot find you. No.
Nope, no questions?
No questions.
Okay. Nick?
Yes, um, excuse me, I have a question and then a comment. My question is, um, just for the record, so the record is clear. Joe or Donna can answer this. Because we're not voting on the final numbers and we're still negotiating, we'll be entering the fiscal year without a complete budget. So I don't know if you just wanna say something that, so we're in public session so everyone can hear that.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so Ron checked with the auditors because that was a concern and why we were trying to get it all done by June 30th because of rolling the budget into the next fiscal year. Ron was able to last week, um, speak to the auditors regarding that because we're gonna go into the next fiscal year by not making these, all these reductions with basically a plug number. And the auditor said that because we're still negotiating with the bargaining units, it's okay that we do move forward on July 1 with not having it finalized because they know that we are in the process of finalizing it and it will be finalized within the first couple of weeks in July. And then we will have a special meeting when all of them are finalized, hopefully within the first week or two of July, then to go back. And then, all these ones just that are not on the block tonight, we will just need to make some minor, um, minor, uh, adjustments to those line items. But that the majority of the line items will be taken care with the $1.2 million and change.
Great, cuz I, I already got the question that how are you starting a fiscal year without a balanced budget? And that's not, anyway, that's perfect.
Yes. So yes, the auditors are aware of it. The auditor, the auditor said that it's okay as long as it is finalized and cleared up within the first couple of weeks. Ron, do you wanna, since you're the one who had the conversation, um, wanna just jump in on that?
Sure, Donna. Yeah, Nick, to your point, I mean, the, the board, our Board of Finance and the auditors are aware that, that we're working through the adjustments. And, you know, as we all know, the budget process was delayed, you know, a month. So we're, you know, uh, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's going pretty smoothly and, and relatively quickly under the circumstances. Um, and again, you know, from a timing standpoint, you know, the, I think the first teacher's payroll is, uh, I believe the third week of August or right around there. So we, we do have some time to work that out. So we will have, uh, on July 1, we will have a plug number, but it's, 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 um, you know, act, it, action is being taken on it. So, no concerns there.
Great. Um, I just had a couple of comments on these, um, on this reduction as proposed. You know, very frankly, I'm upset that we're even here. I was not in favor of the Board of Ed reduction in January. I wasn't in favor of the First Selectman reduction. I wasn't in favor of the Board of Finance reduction. I think that the process was, the process did work this year, but I think that our process overall is flawed. And I'm saying not the Board of Education process, our entire town process. You know, if you look at surrounding towns in our area, the Board of Finance doesn't get a vote on the Board of Ed budget. Where, in certain towns, they do, but it's definitely the exception, not the rule. And so I think that our foundational process is an issue, which is for a different time and discussion. But, um, you know, I'm voting in favor of this reduction list tonight, but basically under protest that we shouldn't be doing this at all. Our vote tonight is not a vote to set the budget. It's a vote to get our budget in line with the number we were given. So, um, I, I did struggle with this a lot. In the end, though, I really don't think we, we shouldn't even be here. The entirety of this budget, when we started, I felt in December, when we started this whole thing, we were trying to fix things. We were trying to make things better. And when the Board of Finance Chair started sending a letter to the town council or sent a letter to the town council saying, which was read into the public record, saying, "Vote against the teacher's contract" or something along those lines, I knew that this budget cycle was not gonna be a pretty, pretty one. It seems that the Board of Education, year after year after year, is given this dictate to come in at a certain number. And I feel that we have a referendum in this town for a reason. And that's so that the voters can tell us if things are too high or too low, vote yes, vote no. I know we didn't have that this year because of COVID. I understand that. But it seems that there's this 2% rule or this 2.5% rule. Come in at that and we can get it passed. This harms the Board of Education. Because like I said, when we voted on the budget, if you, if we put out a five, because that's what we need to run the district that we wanna run, and it gets reduced to 2.5, that's a reduction of 2.5%. The next year, when you go from 5 to 2.5, that year, it's not just the 2.5. It's also the 2.5 from the year before. And it's probably a little bit more than that because of, you know, inflation and the time value of money and all that. But it compounds year over year over year. And I, I've said it publicly many times before, and I'm gonna say it again. I think the upcoming budget is gonna be even worse than the one we just went through. We have no idea what COVID expenses are gonna look like. I know there's this 50-page document from the commissioner and the governor today based on school reopening. We don't know what that's gonna look like in six to eight weeks. We're gonna need more money, not less. And we're being put in this position tonight. Very frankly, this cut really is troubling to me as well. The Board of Finance Chair and other members of the Board of Finance, save for one, and the First Selectman, made a million and a half dollars in cuts to this budget. And they were nowhere to be seen in 17 hours of Board of Education meetings where we went over 2,000-plus line items. And you'll all remember that many hundreds of those line items that we went over individually have a story attached to them. And a million and a half dollars was cut. You know, it's only because of the teachers, who I'm gonna say again, that the teachers and the administrators unions and the other unions that are, negotiations are ongoing. And so I'll talk about the teachers and the administrators because that's what's been negotiated now. They are the heroes of this story. And when the budget was voted on by the Board of Finance, and I listened to 90% of the Board of Finance budget meetings and talked at probably 50% of them, the discussion was, well, everybody needs to share in the sacrifice. The teachers just got a new contract. Well, you know, things have changed. We ask the teachers this every single year. We gave them, they negotiated in good faith this year, and they're giving back three furlough days. And if you do the math out, I wonder if there's even any raise at all that they're giving. And the fact that, oh, well, the teachers are gonna have to share in the sacrifice too. They are now doing that. They are doing that. And it's the teachers who are saving the fact, the fact that we don't have to cut any teachers in this budget. And I, I am so thankful, like I said, when we just voted on the MOU, it's the staff that continues to amaze me and come together for this community. I don't agree with the number that we were given, but the, the vote tonight is to get to a balanced budget. But, you know, take a long, hard look at this list. I'm gonna have this list next to my budget book, whether it be virtually or in person in the upcoming year, because I don't think a lot of these things are coming back. If we put out a five or a six or a seven next year, the Manjo's rule is gonna be in effect. Give me a two, give me two and a half, and that's what we're gonna put out. We don't put out budgets to the referendum voters saying, "This is what we need to run the district," and let them vote it down. I am very upset. I am very, very upset. And, um, I don't want this to, to keep happening. We all know that mill rate numbers, property values, people have moved to Monroe for our school system. I am so thankful to see those club stipends on things that we're gonna talk about at another time. It was killing me inside to think about having to cut those clubs. And I know it still might come to that, and I understand that, and I'm gonna have to take that vote when we get there. I think about what I did in high school. I have lifelong friends. I have friends who I am friends with today because of a club that we met in, in high school. It was eating away at me. And I hope that next year, we are stronger. We are gonna have to deal with the COVID expenses. The budget is gonna be horrendous, but we need to make sure that we are doing the best by our students and we need to sell the narrative of this budget to the Board of Finance, to the First Selectman, and most importantly, to the voter. So unfortunately, I'm voting yes, but I have very, very strong reservations about how we got here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate that. Uh, David?
Uh, thank you, Donna. Um, no one likes cuts. I, I, I wish when superintendent, uh, comes to us, we can give superintendent in the school system everything that they wanted. But that's not reality. Um, I was not happy with a 5.7 and I couldn't approve that, um, so I can only speak for me. I was not given any number or any budget by town hall whatsoever. No one came to me from town hall and said, "You have to come in at this number or that number." I think the Board of, the Board of Education took the initiative to not put a 5.8% on the taxpayers. And then, I can't speak for the Board of Finance or the First Selectman. I can only speak for me and, and what we did. So I just wanted to make it clear that me personally, I was not given a number by anyone at town hall. And we have to budget, um, and be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. Um, I haven't had a raise in my pension, so I can't, I can't pay 5.8% increase in taxes. So I, I sympathize with the other people in Monroe. I'm not crazy about cutting. I'm not crazy about saying no to our, uh, our school district. But like Nick said, um, I'm gonna vote yes because we do need to run the budget. I'm sorry, we do need to run the district with what we're given. And, um, I wanna thank Joe and all the administrators for all the hard work that they put into this cuz these are very tough decisions that they've had to make. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, Alan?
Um, I'm gonna vote yes on this, but with some, uh, reservations. Um, I'll be brief. I just wanna start out by thanking the, uh, Monroe teaching staff for giving up their raises to save positions. As far as I'm aware, no other union in the area has done this. And as always, our teachers go above and beyond. I am concerned about Board of Finance Chairman, Manjo's, his power grab on the Board of Ed as what Nick said. He won't allow anything over, uh, 2%. And that's problematic cuz we hear the needs of the district. Uh, we heard about antiquated science equipment overcrowding classrooms. A significant increase in students requiring academic and social emotional support. And Board of Finance Chairman has also indicated that our teachers make too much money. Well, I have a challenge for Mr. Manjo's. I would like to see him spend one day substitute teaching in a middle school classroom, then he could tell me if he feels that our teachers make too much money.
Thank you, Alan. Christine? Okay, I will move on then to Jerry.
Jerry, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Donna. Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
It's with great regret and reservation that I also will be voting yes on these cuts. You know, I, I, I have to tell you, I do have to echo what Alan and what Nick have said. You guys know I come from a very unique perspective with all of this. And it's, it's no secret how I feel about these massive cuts. And yes, you know, kudos once again to the MEA, the administrators. You guys have to understand something. We want and have award-winning schools, want and have award-winning students, want and have award-winning teachers. But unfortunately, Monroe's always been noted for the town that wants everything and pays for nothing. With all respect to everyone here, I too am gonna echo, and this is something that we haven't heard that you guys haven't also. There is this unwritten cap. Want to admit it or not, want to agree with us or not, there is this 2% rule. And it's happened way before this administration now. So let's go back 10 years, guys, and then let's look at cost of living. To, to you guys out there that's saying that, that, you know, I haven't gotten a raise and this is fiscally prudent, guys, we're not even giving the cost of living. I want you all to go back and, and, and you guys out there watching me on Zoom, you can blast my cell phone when I'm done. Go look at the cost of living over the past 15 years and look at what we've gotten as a school system. It, it doesn't equate. This year, I'm so proud of the members of the Monroe Board of Ed. I hope you realize the hours we put into scrutinizing every, I, I never have we gone over the line items that we went over this year. But we still took a million-dollar hit. the line items that we went over this year, but we still took a million dollar hit. I'm wondering what's going to happen when COVID-19 is over. I mean, you know, hopefully one day this will end, but our students, and this is coming from retired teachers, need more support, which by the way, costs money. More buses and more teachers and more aides and, and more cafeteria space, and we're cutting money. This is, we need to have a town that acts like a team, and I don't know if we do. The Board of Ed acts like a team. I'm very proud of us. But I'm not sure if that feeling is out there in the town, and I'm challenging the town, we need to be a team. We need to stop doing this in our individual rooms and do it together so we can say what we have to say. And I'm sorry, I'm voting yes. I'll shush up. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm just going to go back quickly if, if in case Christine, I don't see everybody with this on the screen. I know Christine didn't chime in. I don't know if we lost her or she's back on. Does anybody?
Sorry, I'm back on.
Oh, did we lose you?
Yeah. Oh my gosh. Yeah, I'm in a bad area. I'm not in my house right now.
Okay, no problem. Did you have anything, Christine, or you all set?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we, I have a motion that was David and second by Shannon to vote to approve the Phase 1, Phase 2, and then the selected non-instructional items for Phase 3 as the budget reductions. So I'm just going to go around for a vote. Shannon? Do we lose Shannon now? Is Shannon on? Can you tell?
I don't see her.
She may have. Been dropped.
May have dropped off. Hopefully she'll drop back, she'll come back on by the end.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Unfortunately, aye.
Okay. David?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Christine? Thank you. Jerry?
Aye.
And is Shannon back at all?
I don't see her.
Okay. I'm an, I'm an aye, so then the motion passes and we still have a quorum, so then that's fine. All right, and then we should be having a meeting within the next couple of weeks to finalize the other items on the agenda. As Joe mentioned, the five teaching positions, as we didn't vote for them tonight, those will be coming off when we do vote for them because the MEA, MOU does cover those five positions being marketing, culinary, the music, and the two reading teachers. And then we will have a recommendation from Joe and I know him meeting with the adminis, the rest of the administrative team as to once all the, everything is finalized as to the final number and what will be coming off. And we will be also voting on the MOUs with those other unions at that time too. I want to just thank everybody. Everybody has worked really hard this year, probably more so than we've ever worked in the past with this whole budget process, and unfortunately, it's not over yet. Because as Nick did mention, we did spend over 17 hours going through every line item and discussing every line item in depth. And then as we've moved forward with the COVID and how that's affected everything, we have certainly put a lot of time and effort into the whole entire budget process and where these reductions were going to meet, were going to be taken, where we were going to find that. So I want to just thank Joe and the rest of the administrative team because I do know that they spectate, took a lot of meetings and back and forth and tons of discussion on how we got to this place. So I just want to say thank you and we appreciate it. We know that was a lot of effort on your part. Do I have anything else before we move to adjournment? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? David? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Shannon ever get back on? Aye. All right. Great. Thank you. Motion passes. Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.